I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, everyone, welcome. If this were a marriage, one side of the family, and who would be here but one person on that side? Okay, thank you. All right. All right. First we have is a consent agenda. Do I hear a motion?
Move to approve the consent agenda as long as the changes has been made, Samantha? Okay, thank you. Move to approve the consent.
Second.
Food and second discussion?
Yes.
Ah, yes, Counselor Quinby.
I have one correction. Page three of eight. The fifth paragraph down says Counselor Quinby inquired how many were in the GRO group and who set up the room. I am not the one who said who sets up the room. I thought that maybe that was Counselor Kremeyer or somebody else. I don't recall saying that at all. Not that it's important, but...
Okay.
I think I was the one that asked that question.
Okay, remove that correction. So, we have a motion to move with the amended agenda?
Move to approve the amended agenda.
Second?
Second. Aloud in favor, seeing as I was saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Thank you. You're carry. Next we have citizens wishing to speak on not agenda items, and we have a few people. And since we just have four, I'm not going to put a time limit. I would just ask that those who speak try and keep it down to six, seven, eight minutes, okay? And the first person is Dean Herford. Please come up. Give your name and address for the record.
Mr. Warner.
Okay.
There's a Metro-Gro Math.
Sure.
Thank you, Mayor Wetherby, City Counselor. So, Mr. Herford and I are here tonight for a very specific purpose. We're asking for the City Council to place on the agenda for the next meeting consideration of the drafting of a riverfront mixed-use ordinance. And I want to be clear about what it is that we're asking you to do, just so that there's no confusion. In your code, land use development ordinance are various zones that are described and created and governed pieces of property. Right now, in your comprehensive plan from 2004, there are areas that were designated for riverfront development, river-oriented development. For example, if you look on pages four, 20, 23, figure 3A, 41, 5A, et cetera, you'll find that it's very clear that since 2004, the intention has been to create an opportunity for commercial and residential development in the area along the Columbia River. That hasn't been done. Now, the creation of a zone is the creation, just like of any other ordinance, is different in kind from a land use decision and is different in kind from a quasi-judicial decision, all of which has different standards for you as a City Council to consider. What we're asking for you to do now is to add to the agenda for the next meeting consideration of a riverfront mixed-use ordinance, a zone that could be applicable to the pieces of property within the comprehensive plan. Now, once that happens, and once you guys have considered from a policy perspective the type of development that you would like to have for this type of a zone, then the next step is for property owners to come in, file an application, and ask for their piece of property to have this zone applied to it. It is at that point that they pay fees, they go through the land use process, they consider transportation, infrastructure, et cetera, and that is the process where you, as the City Council, will be sitting in a quasi-judicial matter in the land use proceeding to decide whether or not that person's property fits within the ordinance that you previously passed. The reason why this is so important is because you have landowners that have been asking you for quite some time for this to get done, and the fact that a zoning ordinance doesn't yet exist that defines riverfront mixed-use development has stifled and stymied their opportunity to develop their land. The sooner that you create the zone with the applicable boundaries and requirements and setbacks and heights, et cetera, et cetera, then they can go back and set to work figuring out exactly what it is they'd like to do, then they can get their traffic studies and prepare a final land use plan and may file an application for a rezone. So, the ask here today from Mr. Herford and myself is that you add consideration of riverfront mixed-use ordinance to your next meeting. I've supplied a copy of something that we have put together to Counselor Kremeyer and to the mayor, both of whom requested it from me. That's a good starting point, and it would certainly accomplish the needs of the landowners. But again, this is a policy decision, and you guys get to set, obviously, the policy that's best for the citizens of Fairview.
Yeah, thank you. Any questions? Okay. Yeah, I want to thank you. You know, Matt, we're going to have a joint meeting next Tuesday with the Planning Commission, which will obviously be public too. So, I think we, I'd like to do some resolution on this. Dean, come on up. Who you are?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Dean Herford, reside at 335 Northeast La Mesa Court, aggression margin. Yeah, I just want to reiterate what Matt is trying to highlight here. Some of it is out of my expertise, but I think that we need to proceed along the line of getting the zone recognized before we can apply to do a rezone. I just want to remind everybody that things are tough to do. Those of here that have been around long enough, I don't know if they'll remember, but Scrubbs would never be here if I wouldn't have had to come and get a variance. It wasn't approved use, so there's obstacles along the way, all along the way. You know, my parking lot behind the bumpers was not approved. That was a lot of work in order to get that approved. I just want to urge us to take this request and try to work with this to get a waterfront zone. It's hard to create jobs, it's hard to motivate development, it's hard to get investors to buy into plans, especially after the fact, you know, with the ranger. Everybody was all excited about the ranger. We're going to roll out the sidewalks and bring development to town. Well, we all kind of know what happened there, but let's not lose sight of the dream. Let's not lose sight of the potential that's down there. You know, you've got developers here in town that want to move forward. I don't know why we wouldn't want to, as a council. Help us figure this out and adopt this and move it forward. I think that's about it. I just want to have the council know that everything's a lot of hard work, you know. You know, I think we have to just get started somewhere. Whatever we adopt probably will not be perfect. I think my understanding is in the city of Fairview, anything over four acres has got to go through a PUD process anyway, so then it'll be filtered again. So, why not just get it started to get some, something to motivate people to make something happen? Because if we don't, then we will never have waterfront development here. I don't know why we would want that. Why would we choose that path? So, that's, we've been around a long time, and we're persistent, but at some point in time, we'll throw the towel in and say, "Okay, hey, the city must not want that." So, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Dean.
Mayor, I had a question for you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Dean, we have a question. Didn't check it up in time here.
Dean, I have a quick question for you. I think maybe I might have misunderstood you, so I want to ask, I thought that you said that we needed to initiate and get a zone so that you can come back and get a rezone.
The property, us as property owners and developers can't come in and apply for a rezone because you guys don't have the text for us to apply to rezone because you guys are going to say, "We don't have anything for you to rezon that to." Is that a correct statement, Matt? We can't go for a rezone unless you guys have...
Yeah, it's real simple. There's a form that you, if you're a landowner and your land is currently zoned, say, general commercial, and I'm just going to use general terms, not specific terms to Fairview, and you want to come in and change it to industrial, there's a form that you fill out and a process you go through that's a land use process and is called a rezone. And you pay a fee, and they require you to do things like account for the utilities and SDCs and account for traffic impacts and things of that nature. And that's where you, as the counselor, are sitting in a quasi-judicial role. You're required to apply the law to the facts that are presented to you in that application. That's not what we're asking for here. What we're asking for here is for you to write the ordinance for riverfront mixed-use. That's step one. And once that zone is created in your ordinances, in your land use development ordinance, then and only then can a landowner come in and say, "Hey, I like that zone. My property's in the area where the comprehensive plan allows me to have that zone applied to my property. Here's my rezone application that would allow me, my property, to be zoned riverfront mixed-use." But the first step is you have to write the portion of the ordinance and set those standards. And that's all we're asking for here today, is for you to put on the agenda consideration in drafting riverfront mixed-use.
Thank you.
That's step one.
Thanks. Anybody else?
So, I might, I want to comment on that. And so, numbers are thrown around of a quarter of a million dollars to do all this. And what we're, what we're suggesting is try to look at this ordinance and get the ball started before we can do our application. We need to just have that language as an ordinance in your guys' books.
Okay.
By way of example, just, and I'm sorry to beat a dead horse, but by way of example, one of your requirements in a rezone is that there be a traffic study. Well, you can't do a traffic study if you don't know what the new zoning standards would be, because a traffic engineer doesn't know how many cars are going to go to your property when it's in this different zone classification. If the zone hasn't been written, then they don't know what the density is, and they don't know what the types of uses are. And so, that's just one example of many of why this first step of drafting the ordinance has to take place first. Then we come in and we say, "We'd like that zone applied to a piece of property."
Okay. Counselor Quinby.
I think the perception has been in the past, and you've both clarified it, I hope, when the city throws out a blanket zone and says, "This zone exists," they cannot apply it to your personal property. You have to come and say, like you said, "I like that zone. I want it applied to my property." So, the holdup has been that you can't tell the city, "You're going to have this, and you're going to have that amount of traffic, and this is what you want to do," because the blanket zone doesn't exist yet. So, you want a blanket zone for the city, which doesn't designate specific areas, it just says, "We're creating a riverfront zone." We assume that's for the riverfront, but nobody has come and said, "I want to rezone to your riverfront zoning."
That's right, Counselor Quinby. And remember that part of the, part of the requirements before a particular piece of land can have this zone applied to it is that it has to match with your comprehensive plan. And your comprehensive plan, of course, was adopted and approved by the land use standard for the state of Oregon through Metro. And so, you know, you write this ordinance, and yes, in theory, it's applicable to the whole city, but in practice, no, no landowner is going to be able to apply it to their property unless their piece of land and the comprehensive plan allows for it. And so, that's how you get kind of the checks and balances in the land use system, is you start off with this, with this comprehensive plan that meets all these state land use goals and all the Metro requirements and all of those things. But then, once you, once you dial down and you have that document passed, if there are areas that don't have a specific zone classification written yet, that's when the City Council comes in as a policymaker and says, "All right, here are our standards here."
Okay.
It's a multiple-step process.
In an email that we received, and I think it's okay to share, this should be public knowledge, your last, or maybe one previous council update, you stated that, I don't know whether it was Heather or somebody else with our city attorney's office, has stated that we, as a council, can adopt a zone?
Right. We have Paul Elsner coming to the joint City Council meeting because the topic for the joint City Council meeting and Planning Commission meetings set for next Tuesday night is the waterfront zone. And what they have told us is that, you know, typically, we go through Planning Commission and have them review zones, that the other option is you could bypass your Planning Commission, take the proposed, we have the original proposed language as proposed by Mr. Everhart back in 2012. And as long as that zone is feasible or acceptable by the council and is in compliance with our comprehensive plan, the council can, by ordinance, adopt that zone. That's what the city attorney is telling us. And Paul is coming next week as well to have that legal expertise available to the council and Planning Commission as you decide how you want to move forward.
Okay, so, all this time, I've been thinking that we had to go through this, this major process, and I know that Mr. Everhart has submitted a plan, was it back in June of 2012, and it got rejected because traffic studies didn't get applied, which couldn't be because the zone itself doesn't exist. So, it's kind of a catch-22 here. Nobody can move anything forward until this zone is created, and then you want to come and say, "Please apply this zone to my land." And so, this zone doesn't have to be perfect, but one of my fears has been that when, anytime the city, be it Planning Commission, staff, or council, comes up with a program and says, "Here's what we think needs to be done," I always worry, is that what the people who actually own the land want to do? And is that going to make sense for them? Or are they going to have to come back and apply for a variance or apply for some other process that allows them to do what they're envisioning, what they think the market is going to support, and what they'll be able to build and sell? So, I guess what I just learned in this last week is that we can pass that. We can make that happen. And I don't know if everybody understands that or not now. I'm hoping that with what you've said, it's pretty clear that we really don't need to stall around on this.
In the essence of moving forward, correct me if I'm wrong, everybody, but if we pass this ordinance and it's in the books, once we come in for a rezone, the Planning Commission will have to filter through it anyway. So, the Planning Commission will be beating up the rezone, for lack of better terms, all they want to do. We're just trying to get something on the books to move ahead.
Something that's concerned me for several years, especially now with the economy, the way it's been the last five years, is looking at long-term funding and stable funding for the city. We've had to lay people off in the last budget cycle. We haven't made any progress financially. Breaking even, it might be inching ahead. I don't know the latest figures, but four, five years from now down the road, we need to be thinking about how we're going to keep funding coming into the city. And the longer we stall on getting development done, the longer it's going to be before we start getting increased tax revenue from all this land that's just sitting there.
Counselor Arnold.
I'd just like to thank both of you gentlemen for coming here and bringing this information to our attention. It's troublesome that it's been over a year that we've sat on this, so, you know, I'm sorry. And you have my best effort, and I imagine other counselors, to you and other businesses to, and other citizens, to try and move things like this forward in a more timely manner. So, apologize.
We thank you both for coming up. I know that I was at the yearly mayor's conference. I talked with the economic development specialist who works for the governor, and he, I asked him about this very project, and he told me about, he'd be calling up and talking to Samantha about a grant proposal that we could ask for, apply for that is. So, I think that this is something that all of us care about, and we will move ahead. Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I had...
Yeah, go ahead.
I guess, I mean, just in 10 minutes here, we've learned, I guess, some new information of what has collectively been going on for 15 months. So, I mean, we're all sitting up here apologizing for what we didn't do, and, you know, talking about economic development, we'll have all these jobs, and I have no doubt that, you know, with that, that will happen, but what's changed? I mean, 15, we've been, this has been stalled 15 months, and tonight's the night that we have learned a new way to go about it. Did you just, is this just something that we learned or you learned and that you're able to educate us on?
I, I thank you for the question, Counselor. And I've been trying to figure out what the, what the logjam is for several months now, and I have some theories about it, but the long and short of it is that, as citizens, it's incumbent on us to work directly with our elected leaders on policy matters just like this. And sometimes that means providing information that might be a little bit different than what you're getting from other sources. And we need to both feel like that information is welcomed by our elected leaders, and we need to have the courage to stand up and do it as well. So, it's a two-way street, there's no question about it.
Yes.
But by the same token, and I agree with you, you know, the notion that it would cost $250,000 to write an ordinance is ridiculous. The notion that we would have to file a form or an application or a document and pay a fee for you to adopt an ordinance is just inaccurate. And I don't frankly know how or why those things or those incorrect assumptions were spread about, but certainly a lot for us to learn as well.
Sure. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? You know, watch these buttons here.
In closing, I'd like to do a kudo to Counselor Arnold and Dan Kremeyer for helping the FBA on what we did on our East County bike. I think we did pretty good. There'll be a report later from Brian, sorry, you want to go on the record, which I appreciate, and you too, Dean. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Okay, next, we have Teresa Davis.
Hello, council members. My name is Teresa Delaney-Davis. I live at 2099 Northeast 229th Court, Fairview. Bear with me, I'm representing multiple constituents tonight, and I have many points to make, so I'll be reading from notes. I've been watching and reading about some recent perceived dysfunction with council, and I attended a meeting to see for myself. After watching the last meeting and reading some of the email messages released in last month's public records request, I'm compelled to speak this evening. I am, and your community is, continue to be challenged by the absence of deliberations or comments when voting. It's a perception. Your constituents are raising reasonable concerns, and I'm here tonight to raise my own reasonable concerns, to make a request, and to ask each of you a question. First, my concerns. Since the election, I viewed some actions and/or lack of action as either freshman mistakes or growing pains by a new council configuration. Upon reviewing the recently released email streams in last month's records request, I have some alarm and concerns. Four counselors have been witnessed by multiple constituents, myself included, to have met together either the day of or the day before council meetings at a local restaurant in a semi-private area. Multiple other sources have witnessed the same and overheard portions of those conversations. Recent records released by requested evident, by request evidence that four counselors' message streams only came from city email messages, addresses, except that Ken Quinby's releases clearly show emails sent to and received by three other counselors, personal and other email addresses as well. These counselors have not yet acknowledged or released their existence. These messages indicate with clarity that there are more records that have not been released for the public purview. Further, it is concerning that only four counselors have had multiple streams on various email addresses with each other, and that they excluded the mayor, the council president, and one senior member. This constitutes a quorum, whether it's one-way communication or not. Combine that with the absence of deliberation or discussion at the vote during meetings, it's become an unfortunate situation that's led to your constituency's perception that influence and or discussion may have occurred outside of meetings. And I'm not alone in telling you that we are alarmed, and I am frankly ashamed of the tone and content in some of the messages that I read. Therefore, I request, as a citizen and taxpayer, that all the messages released to date be put into the public record for the meeting this evening, so that others can be informed. I clearly understand that there's a second request forthcoming tonight that will be submitted that specifies to release not only city emails, but any and all communications by and between any of you from any email address, whether personal or otherwise. I also request these be included in the public record when available. I request from you, our elected officials, in order to rectify this negative perception that I'm describing, that there may be an unofficial quorum that's operating in a manner that might be affecting your rules, and that the public perception of council has, is that, that council has... Transparency should eliminate that perception, and the mistrust by your constituency is becoming a barrier to the good work that you need to accomplish. Now, everyone's entitled to their opinion, and after reading the comments contained in the emails to each other, I'm embarrassed for council. I'm embarrassed for my city. When council argue with constituents publicly, as happened in the last meeting, when they state their views in the most unprofessional manner in written communications, including personal attacks on city employees, each other, and when they have to be asked twice to release information. I hope you consider my comments with reflection, and that it ultimately changes the behavior and actions and operations of council with each other and with your constituents in a more positive manner. I ask you to move and act to rectify this perception so that we can move forward. I'm an active community advocate. I have been for a number of years. I always support this city. I've donated a lot of time and a lot of money to the livability of our community. So, I ask you that you please disclose so that you can move on. So, my question is, will you, each of you, counselors Prom, Kremeyer, Owen, Wetherby, Mullins, Quinby, and Arnold, please, fully and in good faith, comply with the second request for any and all communications from your email addresses to inform your constituents and resolve this matter? There are more important things to do. And I ask tonight that each of you state into the record that you will do so. And thank you for hearing me tonight and listening to the concerns of your constituents and community.
Thank you very much. Next person is Barbara Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. My name is Barbara Jones. I'm at 3201 Northeast 223rd, number 63, Fairview, Oregon 97024. And I'm here tonight on somewhat the same note as what you just got from Teresa. I was appalled last week at the actions of the council. It was not anything befitting what the Fairview City Council should do. But then I got to thinking about the election. And during the election and the campaigning, you all talked about the same things. You all talked about your vision for Fairview and running on the platforms of being fiscally responsible, very transparent, finding ways to encourage more people to volunteer, and make sure Fairview is business-friendly. Now, I never got an exact definition of that, but that's okay. The constituents who elected you listened to you. And my question now is, did they hear something wrong? Or did you change your mind? Or at the time, were you just giving lip service? And what I would like to know tonight is, when the four of you are going to start living up to your campaign promises, when will you stop appointing friends and family to committees instead of truly looking at what an applicant can provide to that specific committee? Don't smile at me. When you will, when will you stop spending money just because it is there? The play structure, while it is very magnificent, and I do appreciate, as I'm sure the neighbors do, having it at Park Leon, it was purchased on a whim, and there was no thought beforehand to what the master plan was going to look like, nor was there any thought of how you could collect the costs of this play structure by examining and looking for grants for matching funds. As you know, Salish Ponds was done with matching funds, so it cost the city... As you know, Salish Ponds was done with matching funds, so it cost the city half of the total cost of the redo. As for transparency, the one-way window has been placed, and you can see out, but we can't see in. How can you make decisions on something without discussion unless you are discussing and deciding on issues prior to the council meeting? I understand that two of you are seasoned councilors, and you have a very good idea of what's going on. But I don't hear much from the new councilors. And I know, after being on council, it takes over a year to really understand what's going The only promise I see coming to fruition, and Matt and Dean spoke on it tonight, was is being business-friendly. I worry that you are going to be more friendly to some businesses than others. And I get that impression, because in a response to an article in The Outlook, Counselor Quinby actually said, "I don't know why an out-of-town developer can be fast-tracked and the waterfront is put on hold." To me, that sounds a little angry. I had a lot more to say, but I think that it's already been said tonight. So I'm just going to say, input from citizens to their governing body is a right for every citizen. And no matter what we have to say, we should be heard in a respectful manner, thanked for bringing our opinions forward, and those opinions should be at the top of your list when you are making decisions. I don't want to say what I'm going to say, but I have to say it. If this is not the case, if you cannot do this, I need to know why you're here. And if you are here, what are you getting in return for the decisions you make? Because they're not good decisions for Fairview. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I want to, for the record at the request of the attorney, note that we have been turned in, all the council members have been turned in, a City of Fairview Public Records Request Final Report. And I assure that that is available or will be available to the press, I assume. Okay, thank you. And next is city administrator reports.
Good evening, Mayor, councilors. I just have a few updates for you. First of all, Chief Johnson is on vacation this week. However, we do have Sergeant Kirby here this evening, should anyone have any questions for him. Deputy Director Lisa Folger is also on vacation, so if you have questions of a finance nature, I can try to assist those. I have a little bit of experience in that area. Also, Public Works Director Alan Berry is here this evening, if you have questions, although he does not have a report, but if you do have questions, please know he is available as well. My quick updates for you is just a reminder, this is more for the citizens out there, that on Tuesday, September 10th, at 6:30, we are having a joint City Council Planning Commission meeting with the topic of the waterfront zone to be discussed. The variety of options for council in order to get that project moving forward will be available, so we're looking forward to that. On October 5th, Officer Fleener is hosting a teenage girls' self-defense class. He held a class previously for women and found that there was a huge, significant demand for a teenage-focused class for girls. So he will be hosting that October 5th. If you have anyone who's interested, please pass on the word, and you can contact Officer Fleener at the police department on getting registered for that. My final update is that Parc Leon is officially open. The play chips, the chips are in, so it's safe. There's still additional work, obviously, to be done with sidewalks and making sure we can get wheelchair access into the play structure adequately, but it is open, the fences are down, so please go and enjoy. We're teasing Alan that we can't get him off the play structure. And if you have any additional questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Yeah, Councilor Kremeyer.
I just have one, Sam, regarding the teenage girls' self-defense class.
Sure.
Is that going to be here at City Hall?
Yes.
And then, what is the size of the class? Are they taking 15 girls, 20 girls? Do you have any idea?
Officer Fleener did not provide that information to me. Sergeant Kirby, do you by chance know?
I would say it would probably be better of 20.
If there's a large demand, larger than 20 students, he'll probably create a second class.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. No reports from anyone else, correct?
No, sir.
All right. Next is Mayor Committee Reports, Comments, and Councilor Arnold.
No report.
Okay, Councilor Quinby.
I don't have anything.
And Councilor Barton Mullins.
Well, good evening, everybody. I always have something, it seems like. Took a really nice boat ride the other night with the mayor and Counselor Owen around Fairview Lake with Falopa. Falopa stands for the Fairview Lake Property Owners Association. They offered this to all the members of the council. Fortunately, there were just the three of us there. Had a really good time, though. We went around the lake, learned all about the problems that they're having, and a lot of the good things that are going on there. So it was very, very interesting and very informative. They did it last year, did it again this year, and I still really encourage everybody to try to get to that. They do it again next year. Second thing, went to Fairview on the Green. It was a huge success, lots of fun. Kids were having a great time. And wouldn't you know, I was the only counselor there all day. I was the only one there. And it would have been fun to have my other councilors there and join it with me. That's it.
Thank you. I will just comment and, again, on positiveness of this trip. And I think that, to his credit, Counselor Owen recommended to the people there from Falopa that they be really involved. And I think that was, I think that was capital, that was worth, to me, the whole trip, because I think the more involved they are, like you folks, like everyone in our viewing audience, well, everybody, the better city we have. Okay, Councilor Owen.
While we're in full disclosure tonight, I did have a glass of wine on the Fairview Lake boat tour, so duly noted. But I tell you, it did, it gives you a totally different perspective, sitting out on that boat, actually, you know, looking at those houses and the beautiful landscaping and ways people have done to enhance their property and getting together the people around Fairview Lake, or at least the folks that we went on the tour with, are really major stewards, I guess, of that lake. I mean, they have a true love and a concern for what goes on there. And they can pretty much tell you every person's house, what they did 10 years ago, what they did last week, and they're kind of self-policing. So it's a good thing, because otherwise, Chief Johnson would probably need like a speedboat or something, right? You know, to go out there to chase people down. But anyway, it was a really good time. I enjoyed it, and I look forward to having them come and provide us some additional information at council some evening. And that's it.
Councilor Kremeyer.
The only thing I have tonight is, I just want to thank, you know, Dean Herford and Matt Wan coming to talk about the waterfront development. I'm a true believer that the only way that we're going to be able to continue, and I've said it time, time and time again, and I'll continue to say it, is that the only way that we're going to be able to continue to provide the services at the level that we're currently having today is by developing all of the existing property in Fairview and raising the tax base. So I applaud you gentlemen for coming today and bringing this issue to the forefront. Once again, thank you.
And Councilor Prom.
I'd like to thank all the people that came forward tonight, that made comments. It's not always easy to come before council to do that, although I know many of you are public speakers in your own right. Counselor Barton Mullins, that was the day, the Fairview on the Green was the day of my sister's wedding, so I did walk through that morning.
At nine o'clock in the morning before it opened. Yeah, I know.
Yeah, before it opened, and then I went to the wedding. And it looked like they had a very good setup, so I'm glad it was successful. I had a lunch with the mayor this Thursday, full disclosure. I called to ask the mayor to lunch, because I think there is a misperception of us versus them on the city council. And we're both concerned that there is a suggestion of partisanship. And I think that we do have a new council with different ideas, but I think we have a lot more in common than we have differences. I think if you analyzed our votes, you would notice that the them and the us do not always vote on, quote, "party lines." We all have our own opinions. And that is, you know, I think the mayor and I are going to be working together to try to get to the point where there is less opinion or less, what do I want to say? A feeling of partisanship on the board on the council here, and working more closely together to really solve the problems and create our own visions, because I know each of the council members is passionate about the city of Fairview. We just have different ideas, and different ideas is what makes for unique opportunities and different ways to solve problems. And I think going forward, this council is a more unified council, and I just like the citizens of our town to know that, that we are dedicated to working together and work for your interests. That's all.
Thank you very much. Thank you, thank you. And it was, it was a great moment for myself to be involved with this, and I want to carry it forward, for sure, the next time I get to buy lunch. Okay. Next we have council business, and we have, oh, I'm sorry, presentation. We have Mr. Brian McCann from Zaraphap.
Zaraphap.
Zaraphap, oh, okay, yeah. I never was real good in the Old Testament stuff.
Thank you, Mayor Weatherby. My name's Brian McCann. I am a board member of Zaraphap Kitchen and Pantry, who was the beneficiary of the BiT of East County, and just wanted to let you know that it was a very successful inaugural event for us. We appreciate the Fairview Business Association organizing it. We appreciate the city of Fairview hosting it. We had approximately 1,200 people attend this inaugural event. You know, local vendors from the Gresham, Troutdale, Fairview area all participated. Everybody felt it was a success. We ended up raising approximately $5,000, a little over $5,000 for the kitchen and pantry, which is very beneficial to us. We spend about a dollar per person to feed people in the kitchen, so that $5,000 relates to 5,000 meals, or at our current service levels, approximately two months' worth of meals for people in the kitchen. Now, we also have a pantry, and that pantry provides three-day meal baskets for families. And we're able to currently, due to our budget restrictions, only to give a family aid six times a year. Our goal is, of course, to increase that, to be able to aid a family once a month, so that they can come 12 times a year. And this fundraising effort is a start for helping us raise the monies necessary in order to start doing that. We really appreciate your support in helping us get this off the ground. We look forward to working with the city of Fairview in the future, and with the Fairview Business Association in making this an annual event, and are just very grateful for all the support that was given to us in this inaugural event. So thank you.
Thank you very much. It's kind of equal opportunity. I missed both events, but I will not miss them next year. I think it's wonderful. I think it's good for our city and good for all of East County and the people that you serve. Thank you very much. Okay, next.
Mr. Mayor, if I could.
Yes, oh, I'm sorry.
Less more. 2506 Northeast 225th Avenue, Fairview. And I particularly want to thank and congratulate you on your recent award and recognition, Mayor and Council, for your support. But there are some people I really want to thank, especially Devery, who was always there, really instant making things happen for us and getting it going. And we just appreciate so much the support we had. It was a trying effort. And Council, Councilwoman Arnold, who brought her crew out and worked through the whole day, and we appreciate that so much. And her family was there till late that night. We kept them. I'm bad at that. And Councilor Kremeyer for bringing out your people and supporting it with the donations and stuff. It was a tremendous event. I'm very much into the charities. I love that. It's a real heartbeat for me, and to see that happen in my own city was really a big deal for me. And I just want to say a special thank you, and hopefully, we can move forward in this kind of way. Thanks again.
Thank you again. I was so dazzled by Mr. McCann, I overlooked you. Thank you.
Mayor Weatherby, could I express also, on behalf of the city staff, their gratitude to the folks of Fairview Business Association and the BiT of East County? They were excellent stewards of the city resources that they utilized. They utilized our equipment as well as our space. When we came to work Monday morning, there wasn't a speck of garbage out on the street. Everything was put away excellent, and we just want to express, from a public work standpoint, thank you very much for being very great about that.
Great, excellent.
Mayor, I just had one comment.
Sure.
Really quick. You know, it was, it was a lot of hard work. It was, I think it was a great event. It was definitely a great cause. A couple of people that I would like to personally thank for all of their hard work in the, on the event are Renee Delano. Thank you very much for all your hard work. Jeff Anderson for coming in and helping with the marketing and all the hard work that you put in, and all the great ideas that you brought to the table. Dean Herford, you worked tirelessly to help put the event together, and I, you know, kudos out to you for all the hard work that you did. And it was actually kind of fun to see Garth work so hard and to be so stressed out. So that was, that was well worth all of the, all of the hard work and all the time and effort and energy that I put into the event. So I'm looking very forward to helping with the event next year and making it even bigger and better. So thank you, guys.
Yes, great, great. Thank you. Excellent. Okay, next, under council business, is Sidewalk Program Amendment, Ordinance 7-2013, and this is the first reading. Okay, the city recorder, read the ordinance, please.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Fairview in Fairview, Oregon, amending Fairview Municipal Code, Chapter 12.05, Sidewalk Maintenance and Repair, and 12.25, Treason Shrubs, Impacting Streets, Traffic Signs and Sidewalks, to Streamline Procedures and Remove Out-of-Date References.
Okay, Alan.
Yeah, good evening, Mayor Weatherby, members of council. Yeah, this ordinance is basically to streamline the process. Currently, if a resident complains of a sidewalk trip hazard, I have to come to council and get a resolution for you to direct me to issue the notices. Then if the resident doesn't follow through and repair the sidewalk, then I have to come back to council with an ordinance to repair the sidewalk and then distribute the costs as a lien. This ordinance basically makes the process proactive, so that if we get a complaint, we do, we would be sending the letters out, and that we would be enforcing our code. And of course, it incorporates a sidewalk maintenance manual, which will be adopted by resolution at a later time, which can be changed as we, as different criteria are applied.
Okay. Any questions for Alan? Okay, Councilor Quinby.
I guess I'm just a little bit confused about the
I guess I'm just a little bit confused about the process here. I don't know exactly what this ordinance is covering versus coming back in the future with a council resolution for adopting the handbook.
The handbook can be, the handbook's been set with all the criteria in there, and the ordinance incorporates the handbook into the Chapter 12. The ordinance is to, so that I don't have to come to council to have a resolution to tell me to go and send my letters out to property owners where I need to have sidewalks repaired.
Okay, so that's just covering that one.
It's to clean up the language. It's basically, right now, it's a bit take two council meetings to take care of a panel of sidewalk, and this makes the process more proactive.
I guess my question is, or concern is, if this ordinance includes the sidewalk handbook, and we haven't passed that by resolution, adopting it yet, how does that, I mean, I don't understand. We're passing in, or we're having a reading of an ordinance that will include adoption of a handbook, but we haven't adopted the handbook?
Just briefly, this is a first reading, so you're not actually adopting the ordinance today, but at the next meeting, you'll have the second reading of this ordinance, and then there will also be a resolution in your pocket, and the resolution will have the handbook as an exhibit. And so you will either, when you adopt it at the second reading, you will also adopt the resolution at that time. The resolution has the handbook attached to it.
Shouldn't the resolution for the handbook be adopted before the ordinance, which includes the handbook as a new code?
It should be adopted simultaneously. So if you decide next week that you don't want to adopt this on your second reading, we'll basically have, you know, you should look at, you can adopt the resolution regardless, but you need to make sure that you also are passing the resolution at the same time, so you don't have the language in your handbook. But I'll also point out that your ordinance has only become effective 30 days after it passes. So even, even if you adopted the ordinance, you would still actually have, and the resolution, you didn't adopt the resolution at that meeting, you would still have 30 days to adopt the handbook.
Okay. Thanks, Alan.
It's a good handbook. Okay. Any other questions of Alan? Yes, Counsel Arnold.
I'm sorry, it's not of you. I don't have a question for you, Alan. I just have a comment after. I have no questions specifically for Alan with regards to this resolution. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else have questions about? Okay.
Thank you.
And this will be dealt with in the second meeting. The next thing we have is a motion for adjournment.
Mr. Mayor, I have a comment.
Okay, go ahead.
I should have addressed this earlier, but at our last council meeting, we had a business group come before us and ask for a reduction of fees. And I just want to state for the record, for clarification and information, that my reasoning behind the no vote was because, at that time, I didn't feel as though we had enough information to make a decision. And so my question to you, there were a lot of pieces still left hanging, and we made a motion, I just felt it was preemptive. So my question to you is, have those issues been resolved, and what is the resolution?
Absolutely. Devery?
Well, per the motion that was approved by City Council, their fee was waived, and it's now $80 per month, or reduced, I should say, excuse me, reduced to $80 per month. And I did go back and look at their application, and as Counsel Prom clarified, even though they are not-for-profit group, they are not a registered nonprofit. So when you apply the criteria that City Council adopted, they were required to pay the security deposit, which is refundable when they stop using the room, and their hourly rate was $40 per hour. So that's where they were getting the $160 a month, because they meet four times a month for two hours.
So help clarify for me, because I'm not sure that I understand. So not a registered not-for-profit, but they are not-for-profit? I'm confused.
Do you want me to answer that?
Would you?
Okay. So when you're a registered state nonprofit, there's filings and doing that kind of stuff. This is a group of business people that, although they are individually, yes, they want to make a profit, the group themselves does not sell products, does not, you know, yeah, they don't make a profit. It's just, it's a club, like the Lions Club, for instance.
And I'd just like to state additionally for the record, I don't have a problem at all. I want as many people to utilize the facilities and for it to be reasonable. And my suggestion would be, is did we somehow do an injustice, a disservice to our citizens by passing something that we found some loopholes almost immediately? And so that's why I didn't vote for this. And I'd like to perhaps suggest that we reevaluate that policy at a future meeting. Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Who's in second? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Aye, aye, aye.